Max one.
Yeah, and then we start the seven.
Anything to bring? I subscribed to his newspaper and I have to renew. I didn't bring.
Page. All right, so we'll move on to item number four, approval of the agenda. Commissioners, if you want to take a look at it, see if there's anything that we need to amend or adjust. Commissioner Kern. Commissioner, we're seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move second.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Weir.
Yes.
Chairman Trill.
Yes. So item number five is approval of the regular minute meetings for January eleventh, twenty twenty three. So the minutes were previously, meetings of the previous meeting have been distributed. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Commissioner Kern.
I have none.
Commissioner, where?
Yeah.
Seeing none, I'll move to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Right.
It's been moved in seconded, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Weir.
Yes.
Chairman Trill.
Yes. Moving on to item number six is the recognition of visitors. First off, I'd like to thank everyone for coming. And also, if you would, just please silence any electronic devices, cell phones, computers, anything else you may have. Can we start over here in this op-ed doc and we'll move across and introduce yourself, please? Thank you. Tim, is there anyone else on Zoom or is it just us? Yeah, thank you. Um, moving on to item number seven is public comment. Is there any public comment? They seen none, we will move on to item number eight. Discussion action, appointment of road review committee for abandonment of road. Section of Seventh Street, Sixth Street and Forty First Avenue, Lee Dixon and Alexis Dixon. Ms. Tabitha.
Okay, so I'm bringing this back to the commission because on one of them, I didn't realize one of them was deceased, so. I went ahead and we did it and I did get with June, so I just redid all of them, so. They are up to date and I did. Go back and make sure that everyone on there is living, so I wanted to come back and get the ones I have approved.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner Kern.
No question.
Commissioner, where?
Uh, no questions.
Okay, uh. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Weir.
Yes.
Chairman Trill.
Yes. Thank you, Tabitha. Moving on to item number nine is discussion action, resolution twenty twenty three dash twenty four, budget adjustment for various funds.
Morning Commissioners, Madam Clerk, County Manager, County Attorney. Um, resolution number twenty twenty three dash twenty four, various budget or budget adjustments, various funds. Um, increased revenue within the Corrections Fund, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars inmate housing, non-county inmates. Um, increased expenditures within the County Corrections Fund, inmate housing offsite, one hundred and thirty four thousand. Um, just for clarification, this is for ankle monitoring services.
It's for one of them.
Ankle monitoring services.
Okay.
Um, general fund, transfers, budgeted transfers from general fund into the Road Department, fifty thousand dollars. Road Department increased expenditures, maintenance equipment, sixty three thousand dollars. Uh, Farley Wildland Suppression Fund, temporary positions, one thousand two hundred dollars and supplies, thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. Rapid Response Wildland Suppression Fund, increased expenditures, capital outlay and equipment machinery, seven thousand five hundred. Um, law enforcement recruitment fund, increased expenditures, full-time positions, and that's just so that way we can fully expand the entire grant funds. Um, by the end of the fiscal year. Um, increase, I'm sorry, budgeted transfer from the general fund into the appropriations. Legislative appropriations, two thousand fifty, two thousand five hundred and two thousand fifty seven, that are two hundred fifty seven thousand. Legislative appropriations back to general fund, two hundred and fifty four thousand. Increased expenditures within the legislative appropriations, capital outlay, legislative appropriations, two thousand dollars. Um, increased expense to indigent care fund, increase of county-supported Medicaid, seventy three thousand. Safety net healthcare pool, eighty eight thousand, um, last year's fourth quarter. Um. Contributions were paid in this fiscal year, so we had to increase the, the expense. DWI program, increased expense, contract employee, six thousand, screening, four thousand, professional services, fifty. Um, DWI fund, increased expense supplies, one thousand eight hundred and fifty. Um, transfer from general fund to FAA Angel Fire Airport and back when funds were available, one hundred and eighty seven thousand. Increase of expenditures within the FAA Angel Fire Airport, capital improvements, four hundred and forty dollars. General fund transfer into the Tiger Grant, seven million three hundred and ninety four thousand, twenty four dollars and sixty one cents. This was to cover the expenditures that we had to expend at the end of the year. Reimbursement was not received by the end of the fiscal year, so we did transfer that from general fund. And that will be transferred back next fiscal year when the reimbursement is received. Uh, Philmont Debt Service Fund, increased expenditures, debt service interest, twenty dollars. Moreno Valley Debt Service Fund, increased expense, debt service principal, fifteen thousand sixty five dollars and twenty four cents. I'll stand for any questions.
Commissioner.
Um, just one, Jonah, um, what was the professional services increase of fifty?
On which one?
Um, professional services.
It's under the.
Under DWI?
DWI, I think.
Okay.
Um, it was a contract that was approved by commission for, uh, Concha Montano.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, Commissioner?
No other questions, thank you.
Commissioner, where?
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, um. I, I did have a question on the, um. Shoot, where? Couldn't find this and I'm trying to bring it up and. Give me just a second, sorry.
You're good.
Oh, um. On the, um, medical. Expenses related to the, um, inmate housing. Um, is there a, um? Are, are we, uh, are, you know what, I'm going to say this, I guess. For the, when we're going to be adding the nurse, I'm sorry, my question is actually related to adding the nurse.
Okay.
Sorry.
Any further questions, Commissioner, or Commissioner, where?
No, sorry, I just.
No, no problem.
The, uh, this document was at the top of the, of the list when I went over it on Thursday and for some. The bottom of the list, I don't know if it got updated or what, but. It took me a minute to find it, sorry.
And I have no further questions, um, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Weir.
Yes.
Chairman Trill.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So item number ten is the discussion resolution of the twenty twenty three. Twenty two dash twenty five, twenty twenty two dash twenty twenty three, final quarter. Financial reporting year and June thirtieth, twenty twenty three.
Um, Commissioners, this is just, um, the, uh, resolution for a commission to approve verifying the fourth quarter treasuries report. And the fourth quarter treasuries report is actually included, um, with this resolution as well.
Commissioner Kern, any questions?
No.
Commissioner, where?
So this is approving, uh, just the treasures report that was provided. This is in a separate report for the state, the quarterly report for the state.
Um, there will be a fourth quarter sm- report submitted, um, to the state, but it's based off the treasures report. It's the treasures report that we send to DFA.
Would it be possible, um? In the future to provide that report? My only concern is that we're specifically in this resolution stating. Um, the quarterly report. Yet, that quarterly report itself, even though the data may be there. Because I have issues with the treasures report and that I haven't been able to find anybody that's been able to balance it yet. It, it doesn't balance, I've had that conversation with you. And so, going off the treasures report itself. Uh, is concerning to me because, um, again, it, you know, I, my calculations show that it's out of balance. Um. And, um. So I, it, it would be more beneficial if we actually saw the quarterly report that's being submitted to the state.
Okay. Yeah, um, I usually, well, the majority of the time I already do have all the information plugged into DFA portal. Um, it's based off of everything that's on the treasures report. The only difference between what's on the treasury report and what's being submitted on DFA is actually, um, the funds are kind of. They're, they're put, they're linked up more, so there's not, so for example, your general fund would consist of your additional one twelfth and your, and your whole time list. It's all, it's all put together in one general fund, um, but yeah, I can definitely, um. Uh, get that to you as a, and in the future. And I will also send it to you after I submit it to DFA.
Yeah, because we don't use, uh, we haven't adopted the state's chart of accounts, right?
Um, we did adopt the state's chart of accounts, however, we just have to do it in our reporting. Um, the chart of accounts from DFA is actually a little less detailed than what we, what we, uh.
That's something, we, we don't operate based on the chart of accounts from the state because it doesn't provide the level of detail that we want.
Yes.
For reporting.
Yes.
And so, you know, you got, I understand you got to consolidate different things, but that's why I think it'd be important to kind of see the report itself.
Okay.
Commissioner Kern. No, Commissioner, where anymore? No. I'll go ahead and, and entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Second.
It's been moved in second, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Weir.
Yes.
True.
Yes.
Thank you.
And moving on to item number eleven, discussion action, resolution twenty twenty three dash twenty six. Twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, final budget adoption. Self a doc.
Um, Commissioners, uh, in front of you, you have the final budget. Um, the only changes from preliminary budget to the final budget is actually just the carryover of the ending balance for the fourth quarter to the beginning balance of this. Um, fiscal year, and it also included a couple of additional, um, transfers that were necessary. One of the major transfers was just the transfer back from general or from the Tiger Grant back into the general fund once we received the reimbursements.
Commissioner Kern.
Questions?
Commissioner, where?
Yeah, I just, you know, I, I understand that there's deadlines and everything, I mean, listen, I did this myself for five years. Um, I, I just want to say that it is a little concerning to me that we didn't see this until Monday and I really didn't see it till Monday afternoon, just because. I wasn't watching my email, I'd already got the release for this meeting and gone through things and. And, uh, so I didn't see it till Monday afternoon and I know there's very few changes. Um, at least I'm trusting you that there's very few changes because. Uh, I, I certainly would like to be able to see these, this budget information much further in advance to us having to vote on it. Uh, so we have time to go through it and maybe in next year, I know you only do this once a year, but next year when we do the final. Even maybe some, you know, detail listing or something or a summary, maybe not of, you know, what were the changes from the previously approved? Um. Budget.
Yeah, sure, no problem, um, I will apologize for the, for the late submission of this, um. It, it, it's kind of when the meeting, um, falls and the time that it does. We don't receive our debt service statements until the fifteenth of the month, so we have a very, very short amount of time to be able to balance those. And work the treasures to tie out that treasures report, um, so. Uh, we were able to, I was actually able to work with Alfonso and hats off to him because this is probably this first year that. Balancing that treasures about that treasury report has gone as smoothly as it was, so we were able actually to balance the treasures report within a few days, which is. I think, um, so much weight off of all, both of our shoulders that we were able to do it just in order to make this timeframe. Um, so in the future, we can definitely work on maybe trying to, um, get a budget workshop set up prior to the meeting so that way we can have a full review.
So, a- and that's, uh, Mr. Chairman, that's another question I have, I know. At, at one point you'd said we were going to have a workshop this morning at eight thirty and then that got canceled. Uh, are, are, did we meet our state requirements for public hearings on? The budget, because I know that there, you have to have a public hearing for the final between the. Or at least that's my memory tells me.
I don't think you have to have a public meeting for the final, it just has to be, um. Actually approved by in commission, or it needs to be approved in a public meeting for a final approval.
Okay, I thought we had to have a public hearing for the final also.
I don't believe so, I can definitely double check, um, but it, to my understanding, it just has to be approved in a public meeting.
And I'm speaking for myself here, I don't know how the other commissioners feel, but to, to be honest with you, I know you have to have this done by July or submitted by July thirty first. And there's work to be done after we approve it.
Yes, sir.
But, um, I would rather have a special meeting a little bit later or. In the future, maybe look at having this meeting in July.
Okay.
The last possible day in July to give you more time because, you know, to me, to go through this budget and to feel comfortable with it, it. It probably takes me two days just because I can't focus on it a hundred percent. So I'm, you know, being distracted by the thing, so it takes me a good two days to go through it and feel comfortable that. I understand the numbers and everything and of course, you know, with this, we weren't allotted, but based on the fact that there were. Very few changes from the previous one, that makes it better, but. Uh, if we could try and make adjustments, and again, I'm speaking for myself, not for the other commission. But if we could make adjustments to this meeting this week, this final meeting in July, in order to accommodate more time to review the budget, I think it'd be appreciated.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, where, Commissioner Kern.
Um, no questions, I, I, I agree with Commissioner, where it was kind of, it was hard to. You know, do it in the timeframe and I understand the. Dilemma that Jonah's up against as well, but you know, maybe next year we can work.
Next year.
Give us a little more time.
Yeah. Well, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Uh. The resolution twenty three, twenty twenty three, twenty six. Uh, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, final budget adoption, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Kern.
Yes.
Commissioner Weir.
Abstain.
Chairman Trill.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Opadaka.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number twelve is discussion action of the Volhill Maldonado Detention Center. Replace two full-time correction officer positions for one full-time nurse position. Warden's late.
Good morning, Commission, um, County Manager, um, so. I, I'm, I'm willing to give up two officer positions, I really need another nurse. Um, and without stretching the budget and asking for more money, I would like to just replace, you know. Two of my positions to be able to pay for a full-time nurse. Because we, we, we need it for medical. Um, medical right now is my number one concern. We have our nurse, she's not full-time, but we're lucky to have her, to get her. Um, and then I just have an EMT, um, I do have my doctor, but he is once a week. And my psychiatrist, he's once a week, they all are on call. But I need more assistance in medical, I can't, I can't always be pulled away and my tenant can't always be pulled away to. Pack meds and, and do this and do that and make sure meds are called in and I mean, there's just a lot of aspects to it, so. I'm requesting that I can replace those two positions with the full-time nurse position.
Thank you, Commissioner Kern.
Yeah, one question, Warden, um. In doing this, will you still meet the, uh? New Mexico County's staffing analysis for accreditation by giving up those two positions?
So we had thirty two, we got rid of two and then that'll leave us with twenty eight positions and I haven't actually apologized, I did not look into. The staffing position, but I did answer some questions for, um. Um, Mr. Chairman Trill, sorry, um, and. If we were to go to twenty eight staffing positions. Um. We would be, um. One point seven eight per one detainee, so. With the way our population is running, we are at a hundred for max capacity, but our max right now is generally. Between fifty and fifty nine every month. Um. So, and, and even at that point, even with the staffing, I mean, I can work on later, maybe trying to get another staffing position or. You know, for you to add those two positions back if, if needed, but my main concern at the moment is if I don't get the nurse, I'm not going to be accredited either, so. Right now, my medical is more important than not meeting those, you know, the staffing standard, just because medical is so important when it comes to detention.
And, and I, I understand and appreciate that being the priority. Um, just, just curious on what the.
And I can check into that.
Staffing analysis.
You know, and give you that.
Do you know when the last analysis was done?
I'm, I'm sorry.
Do you know when that last staffing analysis was completed?
Did it in December.
December.
Done every year, yes, ma'am.
And what did it say at that time? What did it come up that you needed? How many?
We were good with the staffing that we had, even though we were understaffed at the time. Um.
But the approved positions was sufficient, is what you're saying.
Was fine, yeah. Was fine, yeah. I even sent it to Clay cuz he requested it.
And that was at the thirty-two?
No, that was at thirty.
At the thirty?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And I know we've been staffed at full twenty-seven, I believe, at one point in time, and it was actually crazy staffed. Like I had seven people on the day shift, I had five people on the night shift, with fifty detainees in the facility, so. But, you know, even if we rise up in detainees, I still don't have the medical to take care of those detainees, so. You know, and part of those positions also include myself. And the warden, I mean, sorry, and both my lieutenants, so those are not just officer positions, those three include the upper management.
Total staff.
For our positions, yes, ma'am.
Does that it?
But so we help on the floor as well.
Does that also include the part-time nurse position?
Not for the staffing, no. That's just officers.
Thank you, Warden.
I think it's gonna be a hard fill because we know nurses are.
Well, I have one in the works, I mean, the first time when I spoke, when, um. Uh, Commissioner Chairman, um. Was it Fernandez was here, he says that we can get somebody who's in school getting ready to graduate, let's bring him in, so we have them. So I actually have one who's gets you ready to graduate in March, she's also an EMT in, in Colorado. So I have someone who's willing to come over, I just need to be able to have that position. Approved, so I can get her in the facility, so we have that medical where we need it to be. Because our nurse needs help, and my EMT needs help cuz sometimes I have to pull my EMT to work on the floor. In case we have courts or other things that's going on, and so it's, we're, we're kinda. We're, we're doing okay, we're taking care of them, but.
Essentially, kind of, um, what has taken place is, uh, medical is kind of a continuing to evolve. And, uh, Commissioner Kern, I appreciate the fact that, um. You've asked questions about staffing, I think that's, um, once again, the jail is gonna be the biggest liability, uh, for any county. And, um, right now, the biggest liability that I think the jail is facing, I agree with, uh, Warden. Is the fact that we need medical, and I think, um, utilizing these positions, uh, that we can't fill currently. Uh, to get medical is a good thing, keeping in mind that, um. We need to, uh, at a later date, and our population goes up, we need additional staffing, it can certainly come back to this, uh, condition.
Commissioner Kern, is there anything more?
No, no further questions, thank.
Thank you, Commissioner where?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Um, so Warden, how long have these eight positions been open approximately?
Um, probably within the last four or five months.
We slowly done.
Started trickling.
Four to five months with eight positions open.
We've never been fully, fully staffed to thirty. Even prior to me being the warden, never been fully staffed to thirty, even as operation.
And you said twenty-seven was the highest that you.
I believe it was twenty-seven was the highest.
Was the highest, so.
Then slowly.
These two, these two positions were never filled, at least not in. Recent history, right?
Years I've been here, I've never been, we've never been fully thirty-two or thirty.
Okay, uh, my other question is. On our cost of medical, and again, I'm not asking for exact numbers, but. At, at one point, um, we've. Had our, we were informed that there was a, a good savings that we had when we took medical in-house. Is that still the case, and will that still be the case with this new nurse?
Well, if I get the position, it's not gonna cost us anything extra.
If I. No, I'm talking about just the cost of medical.
Well.
Not, not total cost.
Well, just the cost of medical, well, it depends on what you're looking at, we have to have a psychiatrist, we have to have.
Yeah, total cost, so what Roadrunner used to provide us. If we could equal what Roadrunner used to provide us in-house and compare the cost of Roadrunner. Versus what is costing us in-house.
So we're, we're probably around the same amount, maybe a little bit less. Um, but you have to include, so theirs was a total cost, and then it, it was, it would go up. We are paying for pharmacy, we're paying for the provider, we're paying for, um. The, um. Sorry, the provider, the psychiatrist, the nurse, and I think, I don't know if the nurse is actually included in that. I did include her in that, so you're looking at maybe about a hundred and fifty thousand less than, than. Um. Cuz she's an actual physician for the jail.
So.
She's not included.
If I heard you just now, you're saying we're still at about a hundred and fifty thousand less annually.
Yeah.
As compared to when we contracted through Roadrunner. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, um, I do not have any, you've answered the ones that I've, I had, so thank you very much. Um, I'll move to, or I'll make, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, Madam Clerk.
Mister Kern?
Yes.
Mister where?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Warden. Moving on to item. Number thirteen, discussion, action, dispatch agreement between the city of Ratona and the Colfax County, uh, sixty-day agreement, Miss Virginia.
Good morning, so at the last meeting, I came up and was going to ask to renew an annual contract with the dispatch agreement for the city of Ratone. Um, to cover our sheriff's department and all of our fire districts, minus Marino Valley cuz they go through Red River. Um, however, I did notice that it was over sixty thousand dollars, and being new with procurement, I didn't think that that was okay. So I did reach out to, um, my, my instructor, and then I also reached out to some counties to find out what everybody else was doing. Most counties, um, are continuing, are not doing, um, uh, RFP. I had, didn't find one county that is doing an RFP, all the other counties I found, or that were willing to give me any information, are all doing JPAs. Um, and I did confirm with my instructor and, um, was able to look up in the procurement code that it is okay for government entities. To have a JPA that is over sixty thousand dollars. Um, he said that procurement doesn't apply to government contracts as long as they're government to government, and I was able to read that. Said that code in the procurement, and he is, he was correct in telling me that. So I did work with Michael Ann from the city to get a sixty-day contract, so that they can have time to come up with a JPA for a whole year. Um, unfortunately, the prices do have to go up, they're still gonna be the seventy-five thousand a year. Instead of what we were paying was like forty-nine something. You guys have any questions?
Thank you, Commissioner Kern. None, like Commissioner where?
Uh, yeah, um, Mr. Chairman, so in the last meeting, I believe, uh, Sheriff Baca. Expressed concern or informed us that the fire departments had not been notified of this change. What was, have we gone, uh, oh, I see in the back, Nick or? Uh.
Nick, uh, please come up. Thank you.
Karen, Commissioner, ladies and gentlemen, yes, we did have a meeting, uh, the following week, and we're brought up to speed and, and we're in agreement with the sheriff and. And moving forward with this, uh, process, so we're, we're, we're happy with it.
Thank you, Commissioner where?
That, that was my, my main question, I just wanna make sure that, I don't know how this is allocated to the fire department. Between sheriff's office and fire departments, but I just wanted to make sure that since the fire department wasn't previously aware of this increase in pricing. That they'd taken it into account in their budgets. And that all was good with that.
Thank you, Commissioner where? Uh, I have no further questions, um. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, Madam Clerk.
Mister Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner where?
Yes.
Chairman Truhill.
Yes. Thank you, Virginia, uh, moving on, on to item number fourteen, discussion, action, award of RFP twenty twenty-three dash zero zero-two. Banking services.
So our banking service, um, RFP did expire on June thirtieth. We, I did get approved from the commission to do a thirty-day contract with Inbank, so we could have time to do the RFP process. The evaluation committee did meet last, um, last week for the final review for a best and final offer. And I am recommending that we go with Inbank again.
Okay, Commissioner Kern.
No questions.
Commissioner where? Uh, I do have a conflict of interest with Inbank, um, I'm a shareholder, so I will abstain from this vote, but. I will, uh, I have no issues with it, and I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner where?
Yes.
Chairman Truhill.
Abstain. Moving on to item number fifteen, discussion, action of professional service agreement, contract banking services pursuant to RFP. Twenty twenty-three dash zero zero-two.
And this contract will be, um, because of the RFP being awarded, so this is an annual contract, we will. Ask to renew it every year for a total of four years and then go back out to an RFP.
Okay, Commissioner Kern?
No questions.
Commissioner where? I did have a question, I just wanna make sure the treasurer's office, Mr. Alfonso, are you okay with, with everything with Inbank and your office is happy?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, I just wanna give your office the respect due to, to come forth and voice any concerns.
Thanks.
So, thank you. Um, like again, I, I'll probably abstain from this vote, but I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner where?
Yes.
Chairman Truhill.
Abstain. Moving on to item number sixteen, a discussion, action, professional service agreement contract between Colfax County and Molson Corbin. And Associates, Inc.
And this is an annual contract that we will re, that we normally renew with Molson Corbin. Um, this was also a contract that was due to an RFP that was done, this will be. The last year, I believe, that we re- approve it, and next year in twenty twenty-five, we will have to go back out to RFP to get a new company or. For them to bid again.
Okay, thank you, uh, Commissioner Kern?
No questions.
Commissioner where?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, Virginia, did, I know they have the pricing schedule for all the different services at the bottom, but. I didn't see any indication as to whether those prices had changed, do you know?
Uh, no, with our RFP, they have to stay the same for all.
There are, for all four years, they have to be the same, okay?
Thank you, uh, Commissioners, I did have a few things I did, did wanna address, uh, if you'll look on page six, it's a. Acceptable law, so it's just saying that there's, if there's any, uh. Disagreements or anything else, you know, the, the law will be held to, to New Mexico law and preferably here in Colfax County. Uh, it's highlighted here on the packet I gave you, it's not on the, not on our portal. And also on the insurance side, I thought it was very vague, and coming from my past experience, I kinda pulled some, some more. Standard insurance term, terminology, more so to protect the county, uh, with making sure we have credible, uh. A-rated carriers, uh, primary non-contributory, and it's also. It's adding an exhibit two to this, which is minimum insurance requirements, because our prior one just kinda stated just that the. We request one million dollars, and, uh, wherever the county sees fit. I figured since this is the contract, now's the time to state it on the limits that actually need to be set forth. Um. And I also sent this to County Attorney June just for his input. And, uh, I stand for questions from my prior Commissioners or, uh, County Attorney Jim. Take a moment, please, if you'd like.
Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, these, these are a lot of changes, and where the, these changes were not identified, I mean. In the contract that was in the packet.
Correct, they weren't.
I mean.
And we don't have to, I'm just saying this is something that I would.
I mean, to be honest with you, I'm, I'm not, I'm sure they're fine, I, I know you ran them through June, but. Um, it's a lot to try and consume in a meeting, and since we were just handed these when we. Walked into the meeting, I, I, I'm gonna be uncomfortable voting in favor of this only because I, uh.
Okay.
Haven't had time to review it and understand it.
Commissioner Kern?
Would agree.
Okay, that's fine, then, uh.
So, should I make a motion to table or to postpone to the next meeting, or?
Can we postpone this contract, or does it have to be?
It expired on June thirtieth.
On June thirtieth? County Attorney Jim, do you see any issue, just, uh, moving forward with the contract as, as is?
Uh, I, the, uh, Chairman and Commissioners, I do not think there is any, uh, legal issue, sir, but I think I'm. I agree with you that you need to review, uh, before you approve, but, uh, what I can suggest to, uh, the commission at this time is that. Uh, maybe, uh, as to the insurance, uh, portion of the contract, uh, maybe is subject to review by the commission, and then. Uh, you know, we can approve this, uh, contract, subject to review by the commission as to the contract portion. So we can go either the original contract, we're just saying only about one million dollar liability, the general language, or. We can go back to this detailed insurance, the terms, so we can move on with this contract at this time.
So, uh, my question, it has Molson and Corbin been provided this change, I mean.
No.
So they don't know that these changes are coming?
No.
I'm fine with just moving forward with just our current contract then.
I'm sorry.
Yes, Commissioner Kern?
Yeah, if we could just move forward with the basic contract and that, and then we can address this as an addendum at the next meeting or something, if you.
Okay, or just, just move, my, my point to bring this up was more so just moving forward with, uh. County insurance side of things, so, and I'm, I'm fine with, with moving forward with the contract since it is kinda standard order, so. I'm fine with that. I'll, uh, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
And, uh, just.
Yeah.
Point of clarification, we're approving the, what's in the packet.
Correct.
Okay, I'll second.
Madam Clerk, it's been moved in second.
Mister Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner where?
Yes.
Chairman Truhill.
Yes. Uh, moving on to item number seventeen, discussion, action of groundwater monitoring project agreement between Colfax County. And Ziegler Geological Consulting LLC.
Um, yes, so Kate Ziegler came in to our last meeting to let us know what she was doing with the. Program and how she was spending the money and where she was doing her research and stuff. Um, that brought to our attention that we did not have a contract with her, so I was able to speak with her. Um, after that meeting and get a little bit of information to get a contract drawn up, and that's what this contract is for.
Thank you, Virginia, uh, Commissioner Kern?
No questions.
Commissioner where?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I just wanna clarify, Virginia, this is from a grant that we received, and we're already in receipt of the funds. No, we're not?
No.
Is this a reimbursement grant? But it, but all these expenses, this forty-nine and change, is gonna be covered by that grant?
Correct, it's, it's through the state engineer's office.
Okay, I just wanna make sure, that was my understanding, I just. Yeah, and this contract is for forty-nine nine, whatever it was, seventy-three or some.
Thank you.
Forty-nine nine ninety-five. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner where? Um, the only other thing that I saw was, uh, just we'd have to go just backdate it. And you, the commissioner was okay with that, it started on July first. So. We just have to.
I'm okay, as long as June's okay with it.
Yep.
Yeah, yes, Commissioner, uh, we are, I believe that this is, uh, not substantive matter, this is procedure, uh, remedy, we try to provide to the contract, so. I do not see that any, any issue for the retroactive application.
Yeah, thank you, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner where?
Yes.
Chairman Truhill.
Yes. Uh, item number eighteen, discussion, action between, contract between Colfax County and the San Juan County for housing juvenile detainees.
Um, yes, so I was directed by Chairman Truhill to reach out and look into getting juvenile in my housing. In that process, I found out that we do already have a contract with Berna Leo, and then, um, when I. Spoke to the San Juan County, they said that at one point we did have a contract. Um, however, when they reached out to renew it, we never renewed that with them, so I'm bringing that same contract up. For renewal from them, I know Si has some questions about it.
Uh, Commissioner Kern, do you have any questions?
No.
No, Commissioner where?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I do have a question for the warden on this, how frequently do we need you utilize? Uh, juvenile services or ju- juvenile detention, I guess?
I'd ask the sheriff.
So um, at this point, we don't ever get notified whether or not the juveniles are going down. Um, I I've noticed on the our budget, nothing ever comes out of there. So I don't know if it just comes directly here. If they're taking a juvenile that they've arrested here and taken him to San Juan. You know, I I don't know if I don't know if he then he was the the ward and never got notified that if there was a juvenile going down there. So um I mean, just surprised at you guys that we even had a contract with.
Yes, Commissioner Kern.
Um, might ask the sheriff that question because I know they they are responsible for those transports if I'm not mistaken.
If it helps any, the line item for juvenile detention center inmate housing hasn't been used since twenty twenty-two.
Since when?
Twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
So what can what can I answer?
Uh.
Go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, the 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 question was how frequently do we use juvenile detention? I mean, um, I mean ballpark, nothing, you know.
Probably in the last two years, we probably transfer trans transported to. It's not something that is used very often anymore.
Okay.
Um, we the way the state is gone and CYFD, they try to summons or do everything they can and do it by video. Because of the requirements of dealing with the juvenile, we have to have them back to court within forty-eight hours. Uh, so they're trying to do use a lot more technology to to address those issues.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. And my concern with with bringing this forward is just, I know luckily we haven't really had to use it or have the need for it, but I feel like it's only a matter of time with the way society is going. And I want the county to be prepared. So though that we have one with Burna Leo, if Burna Leo is full, this would be a redundancy to go to San Juan, just to make sure that uh contracts in place and something's in order. Uh, Sheriff Baca, did you have some?
What uh, one more thing to that issue. So the way the the state has it set up, Burna Leo County does not accept an arrestee anymore. They only house. So we have to transport to Farmington. That's the intake for juveniles. There's only four detention facilities in the state now. So we have to transfer there. That's like their intake. And then they'll move them if they get uh convicted, then they'll move them to Burna Leo or Las Cruces, or I think it's Lee County. So Farmington is the intake for juveniles. So that would be a a good contract to have if we have to take somebody.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Sure.
Commissioner Kern?
Um, it's no questions. I mean, we're required by law to do it. So I mean, we have to have a contract with somebody. I mean, in the past, we had done Santa Fe, but they closed their facility because we would always go there because it was so much closer. But uh so we don't have any choice. I think we budgeted fifty thousand a year. I don't recall ever going over that, but it is incredibly expensive, like three hundred dollars a day.
Yeah, it is very expensive.
So um no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ware? No, I guess my only my only question, I just wanted to get your your thoughts on this to my fellow Commissioners on on this little paper I gave you. Uh, it says I feel like we need to state all or none, or if you're okay with it as is. Uh you know, the Colfax County Law Enforcement Officers, and then it states Colfax County Sheriff's Office, Raton City Police Department, and the New Mexico State Police making arrests in Colfax County. And then they're stating that a a Colfax County detainee is a person who is apprehended by Colfax County Law Enforcement Officers, and it lists those as, I guess, examples.
I think your um change here makes sense. Again, as long as legal counsel makes it makes sense, I have no issue with it.
I don't think we get to choose, though. I think if one of the other arresting agencies apprehends somebody in Colfax County, we're still responsible.
Okay, well, that's. Yeah, I'm not sure.
I I think they I think Colfax County is, as long as it's state statute. Uh, my understanding is, uh, because um, I'll tell you, based on the meeting that we had uh on the um, the original meeting that we had on the communication service with Raton, and the question came up as to whether we had contracts with other municipal agencies for detention. And it it came out that the only one we had was Angel Fire. Um, I did do research on that, and the state statute does require uh, from, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but from what I learned, state statute does require the county to det- detain um criminals from any agency within your county uh or arrestees from any agency in your county in which state law was broken. If it's municipal law, then the county is not required. And that's what the uh agreement we have with Angel Fire. I'm surprised we don't have it with other agencies. Because if it's if they're being detained on uh municipal statute, we should be charging all the local agencies uh for that detention, like we do Angel Fire. Um, but on the other hand, it's very rare with municipal law for people to be detained uh that long. So it's again, it's not a high-ticket item. But um, I I was able to understand that the county or my understanding is that the county is responsible for detaining uh citizens arrested in the county uh when they break state law.
Thank you, Commissioner Ware. Uh, County Manager Gore.
If you like, I can comment on that a little further now, or was actually uh.
I think now is appropriate since we're we're looking if we need to adjust this or not.
Yes, sir.
And then I think. Going to County Attorney June, if you're if you want to chime in, please go ahead. Uh, go ahead with with County Manager Gore first.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
Okay, um. Yeah, counties are responsible uh for paying uh the um the incarceration cost for persons arrested and on state criminal charges uh by municipal law enforcement officers. However, and I think that is a section uh in MSA nineteen seventy-eight, section thirty-three dash three dash three. Incarceration costs for municipal crimes are always the responsibility of the municipality, regardless of the place of confinement. So essentially, counties are set up, and it's the county's responsibility to house prisoners from the sheriff or any municipality within that county. You may have a county that wants to enter into a contract, which is the case of like Angel Fire, where they may want to charge uh an inmate I mean, uh, with municipal charges rather than state charges. And a lot of municipalities uh uh use municipal ordinances and things like that because they uh wean the revenue from uh any any cost or fines associated with that. But if you're going to house an inmate on a municipal charge from a from a municipal agency, then you'll need to set up a contract and charge them for that, sir.
Thank you. County Attorney Jim?
Uh, Chairman Trishell and Commissioner Ware, I think your understanding is right, sir. And then I believe that the uh, into County Manager, uh, she cited incorrect in a statue at this time. And then I believe that, you know, Mark Allen and Grace Phillips, they circulated uh the memo regarding this matter. I think they are updating this, sir. And then they told me that they're going to get back to me uh today or tomorrow. Uh, upon receiving that, I'll circulate that memo to Chairman Trishell and and then other Commissioners.
Thank you. So it really doesn't matter what this states anyways, because state law will supersede it.
Yes, sir.
So, okay. So I just to to save save time and and county 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 time and funds, all this, I'm fine with just leaving it as is then. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second, it's been moved to seconded. Madam Clerk.
Mister Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Ware?
Yes.
Chairman Trishell.
Yes. Thank you all for hearing me out. I know that I appreciate it. Uh, moving on to item number nineteen, discussion of quarterly updates.
Don't rush the podium.
Is there a fire marshal? Would you like to go ahead? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to start off with some pictures because they're worth a thousand words. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, the first picture we're looking at today is part of the Farley Grant. It's the water tank project. The tanks were delivered on Friday, so that project is moving forward and and looking really good. Carl made a funny statement. He said he's going to start selling water to the town of Farley here pretty soon. So that's that's good news that he's going to have some water available for the his firefighting efforts. Uh, next picture is another picture from the Farley Grant and and the finalization of the flooring. Uh, it's merely, you remember, we've battled this for several years now, and it looks like we finally got some completion. And it looks really good. The chief is happy and uh
What?
Be working out really well. Yeah, Carl's happy. So uh, great news on that one. Uh, also working with the architect on the uh fire administration uh training facility. That's a picture of it on the on your packet there. Um, any questions on that? Uh, we're trying to add some storage to put a reserve pumper, put the uh um draft commander and possibly the repeater system, a mobile repeater system in there. So that's the reason for the garage portion. Also looking at putting in washer dryer for washing bunker gear. Um, restrooms uh that meet a, you know, you know, the handicapped requirements. We've got a couple offices and a big, big meeting room. So it's looking really nice. We hope to have um, the design completed and hopefully go out to bid by the fall. So also, the next page, I've been assisting the road department uh and trying to put together a design for their new administration building. So we've come up with some ideas. This is kind of a preliminary picture of what uh, Mr. Glenn is looking at. He's trying to finalize his actual needs. Uh, does he want a bigger base, smaller base, how many offices he needs? So he's been working on that with me, and hopefully we can get that you know, finalized here real soon. Uh, next thing, uh, completed a pre ISO inspection of Belmont and the Moreno Valley. Um, they should be, no more pictures, sorry, guys, but uh, that's going really well. Uh, they're both looking to either maintain or improve their ISO rating. Um, exciting news there. Um, outside, I've got the donated truck from Eddie County. I also have the fire chief. Uh, Mr. Martinez from Bermejo. Uh, we would hope to have you guys go take a look at it, maybe possibly take some pictures. I'd like to send him a thank you note. So uh, definitely want to see if we can do that at following this meeting. Uh, I've also got the Farley uh completed wildland truck that we've been working on. Uh, we're currently working with uh the departments to build five more. We've saved approximately, oh, anywhere from thirty to fifty thousand dollars, building it locally. Doing really well, and I think the chiefs are going to be happy with the product uh that we turn out in the end. So that's that turned out really well. Still working with the architect on the airport station in the Moreno Valley. Uh, we're still tied up a little bit with the FAA. Hopefully, we'll see some conclusion to that soon. Uh, I know you guys hear that all the time, but we're trying. Um, also, the property that we've been donated there in the Black Lake area for the Black Lake Station. Um, it's ready to build on, but we're waiting for the landowner next to us to swap with us. That piece of property would be beneficial to us economically and also would allow us to have access to the main road uh for a cheaper expense. We wouldn't have to put in quite as many culverts and to access that facility. So we're hoping that that goes through and and we can make that land swap and and move forward on that facility. Also working with the District Attorney's Office in Taos on removal of the law library uh up on the fifth floor. Uh, they're currently advertising for bids for a vendor to uh remove these books. So we're shooting hopefully the end of August. We'll have that area cleaned out and be able to to utilize that space for something else. Um, just to go into a little more depth with the dispatch agreement, uh, went over it with the sheriff and our procurement agent. Uh, very fair uh in comparison to what we've seen across the state. Uh, it actually increased the department's uh cost by about six hundred dollars per department. So it wasn't huge, but I think it's definitely something we needed to move forward. So I hope that explains a little bit better. And that's about it. I stand here for questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Kern.
No questions.
Commissioner Ware?
Um, on on the Rhodes Building, uh, this diagram is in dish in addition to the big uh Glenn that um, the big building that y'all have right now.
Yes, that building would be located to the east of this one.
Turn east what we're looking.
One's a, okay, that Quonza, yeah.
Yes, so this is.
What what he's thinking is he wants an area where he can, well, I should let him speak. Glenn, would you like to comment on this building a little bit?
I had two other questions on the building too, so. Just thoughts.
Yeah, right now, we're just kind of going over the floor plan of what we need today and and kind of thinking about the future. Uh, maybe of kind of an area to store our death, maybe buying it in the bulk be a little cheaper. Um, it has to be in a heated area. We're trying to keep things like that in mind. And pretty much just kind of the floor plan of um, like a toll area, um, kind of utilize the the heated area um, all we can, because our previous shop is just a wood burning stove. So anything that that freezes, we can't store it in there. Maybe like asphalt patch. There's a lot of different different things that we use that uh that can't can't really be, you know, to where it can freeze. Uh, storage areas. We're just kind of going over it, um, kind of making a checklist of everything we think we need in the building and then going, I figured we kind of go over the floor plan, how to set it up.
Okay, Commissioner Ware?
Uh, yeah, also, um have we made any progress on the Eagle Nest replacing the?
Um, we haven't yet. Um, I'd like to go up there. I haven't got up there lately and kind of look at the site that that we're talking about. As far as moving, I don't know how you guys feel about the buildings. You know, or is making it a emergency response area as well?
I I think that was Chairman Trishell's idea. I think it's a great idea. I think something like that's needed uh for emergency response by the county. Um, but I think the first thing uh that we're going to need to do is uh work out the details of the land swap.
Sure.
Uh, with the village of Eagle Nest and um I mean, I haven't spoken to the mayor there in over a month, but uh, last time I spoke to him, they that they're ready to get that out of the middle. And they actually have plans for that lot to do some sort of workforce housing there uh in the middle of town. So I I think that they have some motivation if we can just follow up with them and do it. I think, you know, we can work something out to move it out to where they are, and they're right next door to the DOT uh facility that's basically, you know, at a larger scale, doing what we're doing with the road crew. So uh, it should be a good location for it.
And as far as the road department, we're we're good with that. Uh, because a lot of times we haul our heavy equipment in up there, and we have to unload it right on the city streets. I mean, that kind of becomes a hazard, kind of a safety issue as well. And plus, it'd give us more more room to maneuver.
Right.
Um, far as that facility, we keep a few supplies on hand, such as death, oil, uh different things like that, maybe road signs. We try to keep up there. Uh, the main thing is keeping our equipment plugged in with the block heaters through the winter time. Uh, so when we're up there, of course, pushing snow in the winter time. That's our A number one.
And Commissioner, we're just to kind of add to Glenn. We'd actually had discussions about moving forward with that and going up uh to Eagle Nest and actually looking at the site. And then we started, it started raining, and it continued to rain, and it continued to rain. And uh, the next thing, um, we ended up having to respond to um washed out roads or washed out bridges.
Oh, yeah, no, I know.
And just so you know, we're we're continuing to work on the bridges even as we speak today.
No.
And and it's not really on topic, but since we're talking about that, have we made any progress with the culvert and antelope?
Um I kind of, we have bigger priorities at this moment. I did personally go and look at this culvert. It's functional right now. My biggest concern with that culvert is it is short, so it narrows down the road right there. Um, but we s- we are planning on getting it replaced.
Yeah, I think the main issue is with that culvert. But um, is that when they're running the irrigation water, it's not sufficient. And it runs over the road because the culvert, it has collapsed in the middle, I don't know if you saw those pictures.
Yeah, it's kinda egg shaped.
Yeah, right, and uh, so, uh, you know, I don't know when they're. Running, but when they run a full load or whatever, like they attempted to do, it was running over the road because the culvert wouldn't let it pass through fast enough.
Yeah.
So, I mean, we definitely, the idea to get that fixed before we. Start running any heavy uh, irrigation water again.
Yes, it'll make a big difference putting in a longer culvert in that area. Keep it away from from the the sides of the road, it really narrows it down, right there is my biggest concern when I went to look at it. Especially if someone's driving at night, not knowing where the end of that culvert is.
And 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 the last thing I'd like to say Glenn is that there there's been, uh, I think three different constituents from the valley. That have emailed you related to different road issues.
Yes.
Um, also, um. I received a request from a constituent on a Natae Road, you know, that's the one that goes by the cemetery. The veteran cemetery.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's B.
B four.
Four, yeah.
Yes.
So Natae now, but um, they were wanting to um. Get some street signage there, they want, they're requesting that the speed limit be set at fifteen miles an hour. I'm not sure the process we have to go through to do that, if there is. Uh, but uh, that road is straight and long. And uh, I was out there the other day and, you know, people were even construction. We had some big trucks hauling dirt going down that road, they had to been going at least forty. Uh, so they were hoping that they could get uh, fifteen mile an hour speed limit signs set up out there.
Sure, and I have to kinda apologize, I haven't, I haven't had a chance to get up there lately. I need to definitely get up there, I have several calls um, to meet with several different people on. Various roads we have up there, I'll I'll get up there though.
Well, if you'd like. Assistance or to travel along with the manager's approval, I would be more than happy to do so. Because I know most of those people and they're calling me constantly.
Sure. Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Kern. Um, I do have just a few things, guys, um, Glenn, if you don't mind, uh. On this building, are you guys, uh, I guess the storage of the death and other flammable liquids, is that just gonna be put in an office? Or is it gonna be more so in just the main shop area?
Um. We do have some cabinets in our our shop, our previous shop, now that um. Uh, they're marked for like gas cans, flammable.
Okay.
As such.
So that's sufficient for the fire chief, okay, so I wanna make sure on that, and then um. I guess my other thing too is, just a couple thoughts, you you don't have to give me a response, is I don't, I think it might be beneficial. If really a back door would be able to, you could pull through, maybe kinda prevent kinda accidents from occurring. And then uh, maybe, I I seen the New Mexico DOT shop, they have a big giant heater in there. And I wouldn't be opposed to putting a heater in there, so if you guys do have to work on it, equipment during the winter, at least you're not working in the cold.
Central.
No, 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 they they have like a big giant uh. Was it like a giant metal tube? Radiant heaters up in the roof. They're just kinda.
Yeah, the the kind of the issue that, of course Nick pointed it out to me, is uh, the height of the building. Because our blades and our loaders are so tall, then we'd have to, you know, raise. Raise the, the doors bigger, the ceiling bigger.
Gotcha.
So that's kind of an issue that we kinda need to. Uh, you know, it depends on if you pull pickups in there to change oil and such. Or if you're gonna pull blades and loaders in there, you gotta at least have about a twenty foot garage door. So that kinda changes the whole style of the whole building.
Okay, no, that's fine, I was just just asking.
I absolutely, I was thinking that direction and then I was.
But your other Quanza hut's large enough to do that anyways.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, yeah, if you're interested in radiant heat, um. The uh, village of Angel Fire about three years ago, put in a new for their water departments, not for roads, it's for water, but. It's a new building out there and it's all done with radiant heat and it really worked out well and at the time, it looked like. Uh, when we are monitoring it, that the cost of heating, it was actually much less.
Really?
Because it's coming from the floor up, uh, as opposed to being pushed down and. The type of heat, you know, cuz they heat they heat a fluid that runs through the foundation.
Sure. I'm not looking to keep it seventy degrees or nothing, but you know, somewhere it's something manageable, sure, so. But just just a thought, and then I guess uh, the only other thing I had Glenn on, I had a constituent come to me. I guess it's over there, I'm not too sure on the exact row, but you know, he mentioned that he wasn't even gonna go check on his cows for another week because the road got washed out. Um, and maybe he was wondering if we could do anything about working on culverts over the, over there in that area, getting larger culverts. Uh. Uh, placed in maybe just down the road, so just something to to keep in the back of your mind next time you're out that way.
Sure.
So that's that's all I had for for both y'all, or, and Nick, you got the eagle tail fixed, right? Everything's good with that, so.
Actually spoke with the uh, advanced communication this morning, we're on their schedule for them to come and install the rest of the equipment. So uh, he hasn't given me a precise date, but that's in the works. Kudos to Raton and Springer Electric for for making that happen and and now we can move forwards with uh, you know, installing our equipment, so.
Well, thank you for organizing that.
You bet.
Thank you, guys, both, appreciate it.
The only other thing, and uh, I've had several calls and this is to be expected because of the excessive rain that we've had. But the tree issue in Maxwell is horrible on the roads, there's several that uh, you can't drive down. One, just one lane, one, one car without hitting your mirrors on both sides, so um. I know that's a a winter project for you all, but uh, but it's it's gonna be a project.
Yeah.
It's bad, it's really bad.
Just about a week ago, I went down Elm Tree Road and I can't believe it.
Yeah, it's 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 horrible.
The road so bad, but like you say, you hit your mirrors on the pickup going down.
Yeah, it's uh, you know, I'm kinda concerned with school starting and everything, the bus route. It's uh, it's.
And I understand the intersections, it them trees grow out and them intersections make them very dangerous.
Yeah, they've probably grown four to five feet this summer.
I know, and, yeah, that's a huge issue.
Yep, you know, and and Glenn and I'm not sure if my other commissioners are on board for this, but you know, maybe. I know that's a more of a a winter project, but just thinking liability wise and everything else and with school coming up. I wouldn't be opposed if we need to get a contractor going there and just kinda help clean up some of it, not all of it, but at least to make it safer.
Yeah, um, probably our biggest issue in the summertime is rattlesnakes. And when you're running saws and you have the chipper out there, you're not gonna hear them.
Yeah.
Uh, and you're, of course, all the rain we've had, the tall grass and everything, that's my biggest issue as far as doing it in the summertime. Um, we do have a sheer attachment for our current backhoe that I think. Would help tremendously and take a lot of labor intense out of the cutting the trees as well.
Thank you.
And painting the stumps so they don't come back.
I know.
Okay, thank you both very much, appreciate it.
You bet.
Ward and Slate.
Good morning again, um, so, um, for my quarterly, um, discussing, um. Done, um, for our budget, what we brought in, this is just for detainee um, holds. Um, for the county for the quarter, we brought in a hundred and eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-five for the quarter. For the total end of the year, we were at eight hu- eight hundred and seventeen thousand six hundred and sixty-two thirty-nine for county holds for the entire year. Um, we didn't really have any security um, or major incidences of this facility. I was not gun loaded. Um, highlights for the agency, we did uh, find out that Crossroads did get the grant. For the map program and bring caseworkers into the facility to assist in getting folks the help that they need. Uh, we'll be working more on that um, within the next couple of weeks to get it fully integrated into um, the facility. Um, they've already hired a caseworker, um, so we're gonna be working on that, we also. Um, I know I spoke to you guys last time about having our handhelds, working with Core Track and E-Force. We are utilizing those now, they're not fully functional, only because we have to work with E-Force to do some. Technical stuff, just to get those two to integrate, but that shouldn't be, maybe a month or two hopefully, and then we'll have it fully integrated. Um, staff morale is pretty good considering we are short-staffed, um, detaining morale. Like I said, we haven't had any major incidences at the facility. Um, we have already spoke about this morning about some of our issues, medical and um, being short-staffed, that's that's always an issue. Um, and that was corrected, uh, we do have for staff training, I sent two. Of my sergeants to defensive tactics training, so they're gonna be our trainers for the facility. So we will have defensive tactics trainers already in our facility. Um, so that's pretty much it, if you guys have any other questions.
Not have any, Commissioner Kern?
No questions.
For sure.
Um, uh, not really question, I just, and uh, I think manager Gore pointed this out earlier, so. Your. Revenues for the fiscal year were eight hundred and forty thousand dollars in total?
Mm-hmm, but that's, I was just doing just the detainee holds on my quarter.
And what what's your, what is your budget, your expense budget?
For the year, everything, uh, twenty-seven, that's in total, that's staffing, that's my whole total budget.
So you're able to bring in just math, rough math, about thirty percent of your expenses covered by revenue?
Yes. And we're still doing detainee holds, on average, we do about five to six, sometimes up to ten monthly. Cuz we constantly hold for um, Union County. Um, and then just correction, um, earlier when you said we only do municipal Angel Fire, we also do Union County Angel Fire Municipal. I mean, Union County Municipal, so we do do two municipals with contracted, yeah, so we do have two of those that that.
And but we don't, from Raton and Simran and Springer, we don't bring in any municipal?
I haven't seen any in quite a long time.
But like I said, home probably has her own.
Most of our Raton goes to municipal.
Correct. They just don't have a lot of municipal rules to break. They may do it. Okay, so, yeah, that's it, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you, Warren.
Thank you.
I'll phone some, we'll get you next.
Me and me and Ray, sure.
Good morning, everyone, Chairman, Commissioners, everybody in the audience, so. Uh, for our quarterly report, we've been uh, now doing the fingerprinting for about two months. We fingerprinted uh, seventy-two individuals, they're traveling as far as from Denver, Colorado and and different places like to to come and get printed here. We're making about, uh, we're making four dollars off of every individual, which is, we've made two hundred and eighty-eight dollars so far with that process. Um, it doesn't take a lot of time, we can have people in and out of there in less than five minutes most days. Um, Commissioner Kern was in for fingerprint, she's seen the system. Uh, work, it's it's pretty, pretty neat how technology has moved forward from the ink printing days. Um, as far as uh, training at the sheriff's office, um, uh, since we've grown and since the uh. New statutes have come out, we have got two more FTOs. Uh, that have met the requirements to become an FTO or agency policy. As well as general instructors through the state, having their three years of experience. Um, so we'll be adding those to our internal ranks to help keep up those training mandates and the and the staff that's coming on board. Um, events that we've had throughout the county so far this summer, we've had no major incidents or issues other than our normal traffic problems from. Uh, lots of people coming into the county to partake in the Fourth of July. Uh, and different events, I'm sure we'll be busy in Springer uh, over this weekend, into the weekend with the county fair. Uh, Simran was quite full with the rodeo, I guess that was a, I think a hundred, the hundredth anniversary of that rodeo.
It was the hundredth, yeah.
Uh, so there was quite a few people there as well. Um, we've also been working on uh, director patrols uh. To address complaints that I've been receiving mostly in the Moreno Valley because of the construction project that's going on on Pablo Fashado. Uh. And I will uh, get additional numbers, the undersheriff is working on that to tell you how many stops we've been, and how many stops we have made and how many citations issued. We've also reached out to the construction vendors to talk to their crews about slowing down um. Through that area as well as use of Jake Bricks, um, I know that's an issue that Eagle Nest is dealing with in their meetings, I'm not sure whether they're out on that project yet, but. I I do know they have a resolution in place, I don't know if they've got the ordinance approved yet.
Next, next week.
Is it next week?
Yeah.
Um, so we've been working on that, other projects that are ongoing, um, our radio communications folks arrived here yesterday. To do our annual maintenance on all of our repeater sites, uh, the Springer site has now been updated with the new repeater. Um, and that is online as of yesterday, they are currently at the detention center today, installing that repeater. And uh, doing the radio program for all of those radios. Uh, we maintained our master repeater site here in Raton, up around Gold Hill, uh, everything is in good operation there. Uh, the generator has been ordered for Touch Me Not, but with the supply demand, that generator is not expected to be here until next year. Um, we're meeting with APIC tomorrow, uh, who is the vendor that is gonna be doing that project. Uh, at the top of Touch Me Not tomorrow to start uh. Get their uh, their bearings on what's going out there and they're gonna start the electrical part of that project and that should be done by winter this year. Um, we've also updated our tasers, uh, we'll have training for that on Monday. Uh, we updated our body cameras last year, um, and the digital evidence storage. Uh, the new thing about this new software with our tasers and the new body cameras is when you draw your taser. To deploy that taser, it automatically triggers your camera to turn on, you don't have to remember to push the button. Or do any of that, so that should bring down our liability, as soon as you draw that taser, it engages your camera. Um, so that that's a lot of new technology, I know the state has been driving that way for three or four years now, so we're. Uh, with the increase of LEPF funds, we've been able to update a lot of that equipment and equipment and technology. Uh, we've also got back involved with the state DWI buckle up. And step programs to increase traffic safety and traffic enforcement around the county. That's also backfilling a lot of our overtime, we go out and do the work, we supply. Our uh, time sheets, overtime cards and our data for what we're doing on those projects, the state reimburses the county. Um, that process has greatly increased since the last time we messed with it, so everything is done digitally now, I believe. I know Jonah and undersheriff, Shear are the ones that work on a lot of that that stuff. Back in my day, everything was handwritten and photocopies and and stuff like that. Um, we're still moving forward with accreditation for the sheriff's office and we're now working to update our policies and. Make sure that we're compliant with a lot of the new state law changes and a lot of the federal laws that are coming down after this year's session, so. Hopefully, um, I've got a goal of next year by at this time to be accredited for the county sheriff's office. Um, attached to that is our numbers for the. Um, last six months, I know this is quarterly, but you can see, um. Our numbers are increasing, uh, still having a lot of issues with transports and the cost to the sheriff's office and the distance for traveling. Um, I've spoken to June uh, via email last week, uh, and I I've also spoke with Mark Allen. Um, I have to talk to the chief judge, I've got email, I might receive an email from him, but we're trying to work out a resolution. With some of these transports that they're asking us to do, a lot of the services that we're already paying contracts to should be providing those services. Um, that will dramatically decrease a lot of our transports, uh, in my opinion, because we'll take them to a treatment. Uh, in my opinion, because we'll take them to a treatment facility. They're there a week or two, maybe a month, and then we're going back to the county jail at MDC and we're bringing it right back here. And so we're making that trip twice. On average, we're in Albuquerque anymore, sometimes three days out of the week. Uh, and we have transports that are right now scheduled from Florida. Kentucky, Wyoming, and one in California. Um, the problem that we're starting to run into now, we've been working with Northwestern Shuttle. To try to assist with a lot of the transports, but because of the opioids and the. Fentanyl overdoses, a lot of agencies are now starting to back away. If they don't have a vested interest in that prisoner, they don't want to help. Which I can understand with the liability for those, those counties, so. We're starting to run into that hurdle and now it's costing me sometimes two deputies off the road. Um, and two or three day trips, our per diem has gone up. Um, we're providing updated numbers to Grace as we've been going through. Um, trying to get that initiative for the state courts or somebody to fund that transport because it's, last year was fifty-six thousand for us. When I started in twenty fifteen as the undersheriff, our line item was ten thousand dollars. So in eight years, it's, it's increased. Um, so we are working on those issues and trying to, trying to come up with resolutions, so hopefully this session will, will get some relief on that. That's really all I have. I'll stand for any questions.
Commissioner Kern.
Just one question on your report, what's a business check?
Business checks, so what, what that is and how we document that is anytime our deputies get out, the. Go walk into a business, see how things are going, how's your day going? I encourage them to get out with all businesses throughout the county to, to say, just say hello. How are things going? Are you having any issues? But I'm trying, uh, we try to document everything though, so we can show. What we're doing as a sheriff's office with our community as well as arrests and all the bad stuff that happens, that we're out there actually doing other things.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kern stole my question, so I don't have any.
She stole mine too.
Well, it's just the largest one, it's almost nine hundred of them compared to what the next one's six hundred.
It's good.
Positive PR.
Thank you Sheriff for everything you're doing. I did have one, one other question, document services, is that what, what does, what's defined in that?
What's that?
Document services.
So what that is, 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 uh, serving all the subpoenas, all the civil process, writs of restitution. Um, divorce paperwork, whatever comes into the, the, if it's for the courts. Uh, we can't charge for that because it's the state government. Uh, everything else as far as. Like the writs of restitution, if the renter isn't paying their rent and the landlord goes through the process, then we, we go evict that person.
Are you seeing a rise in that?
Yes. So we have over the years, we have. And the document service because of the local scheduling rule that the courts have put in, that's increased our document service. About thirty-seven percent on average since that went into effect last year. And that's just subpoenas for everybody to show up, example, yesterday's. We had a bunch of subpoenas to serve last week, we get ready for the jury trial yesterday and then they canceled the jury. For whatever issues there were, so now we'll have to go back out and re-serve all that paperwork when they redo setting. Um, so that takes a lot of our time as well.
Oh, thank you Sheriff. Commissioner, where?
Mr. Chairman, yeah. Sheriff Baca, in relation to that question, where does the, your IPR request fall on this list?
Actually, I'm not tracking it, but I have, I can go count them all up because I have them all documented, but we get a ton.
I know, I'm, that's something that, I mean, my recommendation would be to include them on this list because. It's becoming even a bigger issue.
Yeah, I probably get two to three weeks. I know Rheta forwards me a lot of them because they'll send them to her and then I get them. But I have, I have a pretty thick folder full already over the, just the last couple of years alone.
That'd be interesting. I know we may not have any historical data, but it, that would be interesting to know what the. Time you're spending on IPR.
Okay, I can do that.
Thank you Sheriff.
Sheriff, I like this report, I like the way you quantify things and listed it all out, yeah, just good job.
Thank you, stuck to force. Yeah, that's the software.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Deputy Treasurer.
Okay, um, so for our, in our office for the last quarter, what we've had going on is we had a. Um, from that McCloy judgment, we had those deficits to the, to the. School districts and other entities, we got that all cleared up, got them all their money back, got them paid. Um, sent out second half taxes. Collections went good on that, um, then we sent out delinquent notices in June. We did, did get a good little rush on that, we also have. Um, I gotta brag on Chris Morris a little bit because we get, for those delinquent notices, we get tons returned back to us because. You know, not good addresses, people have been deceased, things like that, um, Chris Morris has done an amazing job, she tracks down new addresses. Family members, all these things just to help get those collections. Up on those delinquent notices, um, and we have seen a difference in that. Um, she's been doing it since probably like last year, really aggressively and. Um, our three-year averages of collections, they're going up just a little under point five percent every year, so. We can see some big differences in what she's doing and that it is working. We also, being in the fiscal year, we were just on our interest we've made. Checking interest, we made three hundred sixteen thousand, three hundred seventy-four oh one. We were budgeted for one hundred fifty thousand, so we were one sixty-six, three seventy-four oh one over. What is budgeted, um, so we did pretty good on the checking account there this year. And also our investment income, um, our CDs that we invest in, all that, uh, we've got. We collected two hundred ninety-two thousand, six hundred ninety-seven thousand, thirty-seven, um, for that we were budgeted fifty thousand. Um, so we're over two hundred forty-two thousand, six ninety-seven, thirty-seven, um, that fifty thousand budget though was. Kind of because during COVID times and all that, we were getting nothing of interest rates really. Um, but we did make a huge increase there this year. Yeah, and other than that, that's. That's it, we've just been trying to collect taxes, collect money for the county.
Well, thank you for everything you're doing, uh, Commissioner Kern.
Thank you.
Commissioner, where? Uh, I guess, thank you, Alfonso.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Assessor.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Rheta, Monty, County Attorney, ladies and gentlemen. Again, my name is Christy Graham, I am the Colfax County Assessor. This is my quarterly report. And I did my evaluation with the state, we had no discrepancies. Um, and very little recommendations, so everything really, really went good with our, um, evaluation. Um, the end of June, I did my certification of values. And as always, we had no issues. Um, we are up nineteen million, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, five fifteen, so we're up pretty good for this year. Um, and that doesn't include livestock or state assessed values. And that's taxable value. Um, now that our certification is done and state certified. Um, it will be time for them to send it to Department of Finance. To, uh, get our meal rates, that will be the end of August, so that will be. Bringing to you, um, doing those mail rates. We have, we have had seventy protests in our office this year. And we only have one going to formal hearing in front of the state. We have, um, completed the other ones and they agreed to the values. Um, and most of those were like sales that they bought the, the residence, but they say it's not worth. What that house is, what they paid for. Um, I did hire another appraiser. And, um, her name is Casey Bustos and we will try and get her state certified as soon as possible. The assessor's office will have a team going to relay for life, August fifth. We are selling bags, if anybody is interested, they are five dollars. If you have any survivors or any cancer. You know, and your family, um, purchase a bag from us, but we are having to, and you're welcome to come join us. And it's from twelve, twelve noon to eight in the evening. Um, also, I'm going to be putting a truck in the Colfax County Fair this weekend. Um, you guys are welcome to join in, um, if you're down there. That's it, any questions for, for me?
Questions.
Commissioner, where? I only had a one, one, one little thing, I had a, uh, the city of Raton reach out about GIS. I told them, uh, to contact you via email, maybe we could just schedule a meeting and, and kind of just go from there.
Yes, and I know Chris Danlin is working on the GIS, trying to get GIS on our website, so that is in the progress.
Okay.
Yeah, it had something to do with our UPC numbers or something, so he is working on that.
Thank you.
Madam Assessor, um, just one question, with the nineteen million, uh, more that's been assessed? Do you have any idea what the revenue would be on that?
I do not, but I could get that for you.
Well, thank you very much.
Yes, yes, okay, thank you.
You have good news, did you say? So you're gonna? I think we better, okay, well, so we have issued thirteen marriage license, uh, business registrations, uh. Eight. We filed fourteen probates, we recorded eight hundred and sixty-three documents. We've been attending the commission meetings, um, we have billed and collected for copies in microfilm. A twelve thousand, five eighteen, um, and thirty cents. We were working on the, uh, our election registrations. We sent out over six hundred, uh, letters to people that have moved and we are starting to get voter cancellations back. We did have, um, the Secretary of State's office come in for the evaluation on the security of our voting machines. And of our voting equipment as well as our voter registration cards. And we are in compliance with everything, so, um, our machines are behind. Two locked doors, we do have an alarm system on there with two of us with the code to get in. And they were pleased with what we had, um. We did go to the summer conference in Farmington and the Secretary of State did advise us that they do. Have some money that, uh, will be coming available, so I'm going to see if they will provide us some cameras. So that we can actually have cameras on our voting machines at all times, as well as in the room where we, um. Produce our absentee ballots and where we house our, um, voter registration cards. And then, uh, I would like to have one more camera set up in the hallway, that way. We can kind of watch to see when we're doing early voting and whatnot, the people that are coming in and kind of know who's in the building with us. Um, we did complete two all-male in ballot elections, one was for the Maxwell School District and their, uh, question passed. We will have one more, uh, question on this coming, uh, uh, ballot for them. We did the, uh, question for the Springer Hospital, uh, also passed. We did bill, bill them both and we have collected the fees for them. We're getting ready for the local election, which will be held on November seventh, we will have election school next month, um. We are currently working with Teralogic, they have come in and they picked up some of our. Aperture cards as well as some of our microfiche, so they will be working on those to get the document scanned in. If we do have people calling in requesting copies, they are pretty good about getting back to us. Within a couple of hours, we kind of had some issues at the beginning, but we are, um, getting a quicker turnaround. Um, probate judge, uh, Quint, uh, does have an issue with us, uh, sending out the probates. To get them scanned, so we will probably have to look to see. What it will cost us to have the probate record scanned and we may not be able to afford to have them scanned in. Let's see, we now do, we have collected for liquor license, uh. For the vendors in Colfax County, uh, everybody is current on their business registrations as well. Sarah and I did attend the Clerk's affiliate meeting in Ria Dosto, we went over our legislative priorities and. Other issues from the Clerk's office. Nice down for any questions, if you have any.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Commissioner Kern. Commissioner, where? I don't have any either, thank you Rheta for everything. Mister Nick. But, I'm sorry, Tom.
That's all right. Thank you, Mister Chair Commissioners, everybody else, uh, Tom Behill, Emergency Management. So, um, first off, if any of you have insight into the weather, I'm all ears, because it's not the monsoon we need. Um, it's providing some challenges, but on that, uh, one of my pieces of good news, um. Kind of a pet project going back about ten years. But eight years, the, the twenty fifteen floods. Opened my eyes to an issue we have in our county and the then director of the regional, uh, National Weather Service was close friend. And we consulted over this issue, um. For a very long time and tried to find solutions, but the issue is, so National Weather Service has an array of. Radars around the country, tracking weather systems. Uh, those are owned by the National Weather Service, they're also partner with the military, uh, military installation weather services. And, uh, even privately owned radars as well, so the news corporations that have their own radars are all tied into this nationwide grid. Uh, the state of New Mexico has two black holes in radar coverage and one of them is in Colfax County. That black hole extends from basically Simran up to Amalia across to Vermejo. And so the greater Vievedal area is a radar black hole and that's, um, radars work off of line of sight. And so over the horizon, plus any obstructions in the way, delete out any radar signature. The, the three available radars that cover our area are out of Albuquerque, Clovis and, uh, Pueblo. And in between them, they all have these features that combine right over that area. To where they can't see anything below about twenty-five thousand feet. So anything below that, they have no clue what it is. Now, anything above that, they can see. But certainly any low-flying storms completely blind to, any storms that have that composite, they can see the top end, they can kind of guess what's down here. But again, they're completely blind. They do have, uh, estimation software and so they'll track a storm as it comes into that black hole. And based on wind models and all the other stuff, they'll kind of predict what it's doing down there, but again, that's just prediction, that's not actual real-time data on what's going on. I can wear this in twenty fifteen, uh, if you remember, we had a flood back then. A significant portion of US sixty-four, about twelve miles, had landslide after landslide over twenty-four hours, we removed about two hundred and fifty. Thousand cubic yards of material from the highway. A significant operation, we also, uh, had one fatality up on Philmont, the loss of a fourteen-year-old scout. As well as about two dozen others who had actually. Either got extricated or self-extricated from the bloodwater, so significant flood event. Um, meets the criteria of a hundred-year flood, possibly even into the thousand-year flood potential. Um, in our recorded history, we actually have three of those floods. In the early part of last century, I think nineteen oh six, was the flood that was described as the Mills Canyon disaster. Where the town of Mills Canyon ceased to be. Um, and then in the sixties, sixty-five, I believe, we had a significant flood that affected from Springer through the CS all the way up to, um, Simron. And that extended, basically that whole area was underwater for about three days, and then we had the twenty fifteen flood. What's significant about that is all three of those had storms that started basically up north in Colorado. Um, and then tracked due south, straight into the Vievedal and sat there lowland. For a long extended period. And again, with our current coverage, we don't see those storms. In fact, the night of that storm, the head of the National Weather Service was on duty. Um, he saw that storm disappear under his radar, he called me immediately and said, hey, this is a problem. And we were able to get some of the word out and that's why we're, some of the camps in Philmont were able to start evacuations and prevented. Further disaster, but again, this is a big problem. Um, over the years. The other issue is certainly we don't control that land. And there's little we can do other than pushing people in the right direction in order to get that kind of. Data collection available, uh, National Weather Service wasn't really interested in an additional radar just to cover that area. Um, and so the good news is, finally, after all these years of pushing and pulling, writing letters of recommendation, talking with everyone I can. Um, I don't take sole credit for this, uh, the current project, uh, credit goes to Philmont, but Philmont's working with, uh, USGS. Currently, and they're putting in some ground-based, um, weather collects, collection sites. In the old, uh, U Park Barnsgarth, and so that includes both north and south sides of US sixty-four going up in the Dean Canyon. And so we're going to have some live data coming from those sites. That'll help supplement anything that we've lost under that. that will help supplement anything that we've lost under that radar signature. Additionally, it sounds like, uh, Carson National Forest is also working on some projects in the Vievedal to put in some additional weather stations. Um, so that's the good news I'm able to report is hopefully in the next, uh, coming years, we're going to have a lot better tracking on what happens in that blind spot in our county, uh, because as history has shown, our big problems come from storms in that area. Um, even the storm last week, that one, that was a wild card. Uh, certainly didn't look like the rain amounts that we expected. But, uh, if you saw any of the pictures that made it on Facebook, uh, we had a blowout on the three oh two, three oh two, three oh three mile marker on US sixty-four, pushed the Jersey barriers out, uh, dumped, eh, probably about ten dump trucks worth of material onto the road. Um, significant problem. And so these are going to continue to happen. Um, burn scars, of course, are prolonged recovery events. The twenty fifteen flood, additionally to the be, the hundred-year storm event, um, a lot of that flooding potential is actually tracked back to the Ponyo Complex fire, uh, from two thousand and two. So again, we see fifteen-year time span between the actual fire itself and the resulting post-fire flood damage. And we will be looking at that same potential with both U Park Fire in the coming years. Um, we saw that off the White's Peak Fire, uh, Morris Creek Fire, and now of course the Cook's Peak Fire as well. So, uh, that's something definitely to keep eyes on, but again, that's good news to report. Uh, moving on with the Cook's Peak Fire, last year we applied through, uh, USDA NRCS for an emergency watershed protection program um, for the Miami Basin following the Cook's Peak Fire. We were granted an award of nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars, rough, rough numbers, uh, for mastication reseeding and some sediment catchment basins. I have fought tooth and nail for the last year trying to find a contractor to do this work. Uh, for various reasons, last year, ma- many of them were tied up with the Calf Canyon, Hermits Peak Fire, Burn Scars. They weren't available then. A lot of them were just non-responsive. Um, the funny side note on that is I found out the state purchasing agreement was over two years old and the state hadn't updated any of the pricing agreements for mastication work. So all these contractors were looking at this state pricing agreement with two-year-old fuel costs. And so they weren't even picking up the phone, or if they were picking up the phone, they were turning down any potential work because they would lose their shirts trying to pay for fuel on two-year-old fuel pricing agreements. Uh, the state finally updated that about two weeks ago. Uh, new pricing agreements went out and lo and behold, now I have contractors taking my phone calls. So we have until October to complete this project. Um, I still can't find a contractor, um, who can satisfactory complete the sediment catchment basins, but I do have one in line right now and, um, I'm updating the proposal. As soon as I have some word back from them and more paperwork, I'll be working with our financial specialists. And we're looking at about four hundred and fifty acres of mastication reseeding. Uh, the initial state pricing agreement looks to be about twelve hundred and fifty dollars per acre. So that works out to be about, uh, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's well within the margins of the available project. Uh, one of the other things we need to do is get a resurvey within NRCS and see if that area of coverage is still valid number, uh, depending on how much regrowth has happened within the burn scar. Uh, so we'll be updating that number. Most likely, the area will shrink some, but I'm still looking at probably around four hundred acres of mastication. Uh, that contractor should be able to satisfactorily complete that by the October timeline. So kind of rapidly throwing all this together so we can get that in the works. Um, the other thing is making sure the contractor knows, um, the county can't float any of that money. Uh, certainly, so they'll have to wait for reimbursement. Basically submit to us. We submit to NRCS. NRCS sends us the money. We send them the money. So the contractor just, I need to make sure they're fully aware that they're going to be waiting on a check that we aren't going to be able to put out tho- those funds directly. Um, and of course, the, the good note on that, uh, EWP project that we submitted for is that's a hundred percent cost share. So NRCS is picking up everything, which means we have no additional um, need for justification on our end for providing any cost share, uh, with that project. And so again, it's just a matter of making sure my time and, uh, the financial officer's time, um, is spent adequately. Uh, going into the future, uh, of course, coming into the fall, uh, that's again, a lot of conference time, a lot of training time. We have some, uh, pretty unique opportunities coming up. Next week, I'll be hosting a one-on-one with the new director of, uh, New Mexico DHSEM. The secretary will be making a trip up here. I'm going to give him a short tour of Burn Scar. We're going to talk watershed. Um, he kind of wanted a, a more personal one-on-one with me to discuss some of the, the issues we have regarding state versus county and the cooperative efforts that we put forward. And so excited for that, uh, next month. We have a training with the FBI for, uh, nuclear transportation. That's mostly DoD, DOE-type nuclear transportations. It's coming down I twenty-five. I poured that onto the sheriff's office as well. Um, so that'll be a good training, uh, pipeline trainings coming up, which is an annual training we, uh, do in coordination with the natural gas providers in the area and invite all our firefighters out to make sure that they're aware of natural gas lines and procedures to do if we have any fires in around that area. And then looking at some additional, uh, training opportunities, uh, the good thing about this summer, since it has been fairly low-key, um, I've been able to go out to, uh, quite a few classes and start up working on some of my other certifications as necessary for this job. And I'll be looking to continue those coming through the next, uh, following months. And then as we get into fall, of course, we'll be looking at, uh, winter storm preparedness. And so I'll be meeting with all of our other cooperators, DOT, state police, and we'll start talking about winter preparedness goals and what we need to do, especially regarding the pass. Um, the good news is some of that construction on the pass is starting to taper off, which should alleviate some of our previous headaches that we've had in the past couple of years with winter storms and accidents happening up there. But certainly we want to make sure we're prepared for the worst in case any of that happens. And then working with our local cooperators as far as shelter preparedness. Um, kind of the final note I want to put forward, just some thoughts, if the county is interested in pursuing this dual-use facility in Eagle Nest, um, some concerns I have is an adequate sheltering facility needs a number of key things, one of them being can, complete HVAC system. That's primary. And so that would be the difference between housing a, an equipment barn versus putting people in there is you can't just have a little small heater just to keep equipment from freezing. We need full HVAC systems. Also, um, the sheltering recommendations pre-COVID, um, it was recommended about fifty square foot per person for a shelter. When we went into the COVID area, that moved up to be about two hundred to three hundred square feet per person. Since then, they brought that number back down, but they're still recommending somewhere between fifty to a hundred square feet per person. So if you're looking at the anticipated load that building's going to have, that's going to be one of your calculations for housing people as well as bathroom facilities, uh, that typically runs about ten people per single bathroom. So a toilet facility. So again, if you're looking at housing fifty people in there, then you're going to need at least five bathrooms or five stalls per gender assignment or multi-gender assignment, however you're doing that. Um, and then the final concern regarding that is if it is a dual-use facility that's housing, um, potentially hazardous chemicals, that not only needs, um, secure stores to keep them away from people in there, but actually you need a separate HVAC, at least line to where there's no chance of shared air coming into a habitable area from that chemical storage. So those costs, um, would significantly ra- raise, um, a building if you're looking at equipment storage versus dual-use facility. So that's something to be thinking about. Um, again, I understand the desire for folks to stay near where their house is, but from the public safety standpoint, I'm more inclined to get people away from a fire as much as possible. Um, so if that's what the commission wants to go forward with, with providing this facility, you know, I'll, I'll throw my, my shoulder into the work, but again, it's not something I highly recommend. I think, um, it's better to rely on existing facilities and again, get them out of the way and get them to a place where we can provide adequate coverage for them. And that, in my mind, for the Moreno Valley, our best partner is over in Taos. Because most of the time that gets them upwind of any potential fire spread. Most of the times fires are spreading towards the east or favoring the east. Um, so again, maintaining those partnerships with folks like Taos County. And again, looking at other parts of our county, um, if I'm evacuating Simron, I don't want to put people in U Park. That, that's not adequate. Instead, I would look to either Raton, but again, if winds are favoring pushing smoke into Raton, Raton may not even be my primary for the town of Simron. Might be looking somewhere else, Ashland Guard Facility in Springer. So again, it's, it's maintaining that flexibility is kind of my mentality on it. But again, I think a dual-use facility could be beneficial for the county, even if it's not just for emergency sheltering, um, possibility of having alternate space up in the Moreno Valley for us to do other fun things. That's something to be considered as well.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Kern.
Questions, thanks, Tom.
Commissioner, where? Um, I'm gonna tell, I just had one, one quick question. Do you do, uh, do you send out the text messages? Or how does, does your office do anything like that as far as emergency stuff goes?
Yeah, the mass notification system?
Yes.
Yes, that comes through my office.
Okay. Is it possible for like the utilities to have a contract with you to send out notifications that way?
Um.
I'm just curious. And if you don't know right now, that's fine. You may get back.
Still, part of the problem with that gets into if it's a public utility versus a private or co-op. Um, and again, the, the way we're paying for that is with county funds to, to fund this system. But it's also a means of control of the system as well. Um, we want to avoid any errors and mistakes. I've reached out to the utilities. I've reached out to all the villages and told them, you know, straight up, just, just give me a call and let me know what message you want to send out. And I'm more than happy to do that. And by and large, most of municipalities in particular, they're more than happy to give me the call and I can put out that notice. The last couple of months been working with, uh, village of Simron and we put out quite a few messages because they've had issues with their water system.
Okay. Well, that's good to know. Thank you. We're, uh, on the RPS side. It's, 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 uh, publicly owned and they're, they're working through an emergency plan now. And that was one of the main concerns that we have is, let's say constituents on oxygen. She, she's on a battery backup. She only has so much time left, you know, at least to notify them. You know, this is, the power is going to expect to be on in an hour or so, or it's going to be longer. So at least they know how to plan.
I'll reach out to RPS again and just.
Okay. They're in the process of it now. So, but yeah, I'd appreciate.
Have the ability and just give me a call.
Thank you. I appreciate it. That's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Tom, thank you very much. And I do, uh, appreciate, um, as does the commissioner insight and understanding as far as on when it's involving evacuations and moving people out of an area danger and stuff like. We will be working with you on this project. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Or is there any more reports being given? None? All right. Uh, moving on to the Commissioner Docket, Commissioner Kern.
Um, really don't have anything to report. I've got a few questions, but they're usually addressed in the manager's dockets. So I'll save my questions till after he speaks.
All right.
Thank you.
Commissioner, where?
Um, I just wanted to, um, uh, request that the manager discuss the, uh, commercial air grant, the status of that. Also, the fencing around, um, solid waste facilities. And I'd also like to get an update. I know this is kind of last minute and hasn't been on our agendas lately, but uh, on our nine-one-one service. Cause I know that I remember, I don't know, six or eight months ago, we had, they'd bound over two thousand errors in our nine-one-one system and uh, I just hadn't heard what the status of that system is recently.
Thank you, Commissioner Weir. Um, I just have a few things to update. You know, I encourage everyone to go out to the, the Colfax County Fair. It's put on by the Colfax County Fair Associations this weekend. I have a rodeo and everything else. I know a lot of our constituents will probably be in attendance. Um, I'm, I'm asking the, the county manager to talk with, uh, the city manager for Raton on a potential film liaison. Uh, Rat, City of Raton has a film liaison currently. Her name's Anne Thies. If you recall, she's done presentations for us before on the El Raton Media Works. And, uh, pushing films and everything else, there's, uh, some films that are looking to be filmed here in Colfax County, uh, this upcoming spring. And I just really want to make sure that the film liaison, if we could share with the city of Raton, um, you know, we could have a good experience for these film companies and they'd want to come back. It's a good revenue source and they get a good tax credit for, for coming out here rurally. So if I, if we could help them out more, we can. I feel like one of the first steps is the film liaison and just maybe start from there. So I just asked the county manager to, to look into that and then report back to us at a later date. Um, I'm also asking the county manager to, to, and the county attorney to go forward with an agenda policy. As far as I understand the, my fellow commissioners' concerns of timeliness on getting the documentation and everything like that. So I believe in reviewing this policy beforehand and sharing ideas between us fellows commissioners, the manager's office, we could get a good policy in place. Um, on the next agenda, I've also had some constituents reach out. They're requesting a referendum project. Um, just wanted to let you all know that's going to be coming up. Uh, and I also wanted to give an update.
What's a referendum on?
There's, uh, no, it's a state referendum project. It's a nonpartisan agreement. Um, I'll go ahead and, and request that the county manager send out the information just so, so we know it's nothing, uh, to us and just be a statement. It's nothing, nothing legal. It's a nonpartisan about allowing, uh, I don't know all the information, but I'll, I'll make sure it's sent out. Just wanted to give you all a heads up on that. And then on the congressional directed spending, I got word back and we did not get any funding. It got shot down in the, the, uh, federal level. But I do have a meeting with Senator Lujan's office on Thursday to learn how to better, uh, better work it and try again next year. And that is all I have. So, uh, moving on to item number twenty-one, manager's docket.
Uh, the commission had asked me, uh, to contact, uh, our, uh, county engineers and look for restrooms at the event center. And, uh, I do have some information on that and I will actually have this on the, uh, August eighth agenda. Essentially, we did get the following information, uh, a task order for protect, uh, professional architectural and engineering services. The design and scope of services was to pre- prepare a schematic design for approval, architectural design, mechanical design, plumbing design, elec- electrical design, prepare final plans and bidding, uh, documents. Preliminary code analysis, uh, was completed and the following items, uh, at a minimum will need to be included in the restroom upgrades. Fire suppression and fire alarm system for the entire existing six thousand square foot building. Restrooms will include men's restroom with two toilets, two urinals. Women's, uh, restroom with five toilets, minimum of three lavatories per restroom, one family restroom, one toilet, one lavatory, one ADA drink and fountain. There were additional items to be considered, uh, to include a janitor's closet with a mop and floor drain, better insulate the building and paved ADA parking. Um, with, uh, all that, the estimated, uh, cost, uh, came in at four hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eighty-one. I did, uh, reach out to Mike Proline and said, is there anything we can cut? Is there any, uh, any ideas you have to try to reduce this cost? Uh, so Mike is, uh, working on that currently and, uh, we will have this, uh, on the agenda for discussion next meeting. Um, we did, uh, uh, receive notice that we got a one point two million aviation grant from the New Mexico Department of AB, uh, Transportation for aircraft hangars, construction and repair. I will have this also on the August eighth agenda, uh, for approval by the commission. So I think we're moving forward there. And along with the, uh, um, commercial, uh, um, request that Commissioner Weir had asked, uh, we're reviewing right now a sample, a contract to move forward on that. Um, I gotta say, I think the timing is really good, has. Um, I gotta say, I think the timing is really good, has the commission has been aware. Um, there were several, I think sixteen findings at the airport that needed to be addressed. We're down to the last couple now, um. Yeah, I don't think a, uh, commercial aviation would have been interested had those issues not been addressed. So I think, uh, working on the commercial aviation, uh, portion at this time of moving forward. And with this grant, um, I think we are. Moving forward in a, in a very positive way. Um, this quarter has seen record rains, um, which were discussed that which significantly reduced, uh, countywide. Wildland fire danger, which was a good thing. Uh, with that said, uh, we did need to, uh, manage washed out roads and resurface a bridge. We are still working on these issues together with the New, uh, the Mexico Department of Transportation. Stand, road and bridge, we are, uh, currently inspecting bridges as well. IT has worked, uh, with our maintenance department to reconfigure the sound system. Own system, zoom capabilities and improving the mics. We will have to work on the sound buffering and, uh, we'll say, uh, we'll stay on it till we're complete. I think the commission should have noticed that there was significant improvement in the sound system, uh, with the mics, you don't have to get right up on it. We also have telephonic, uh, devices, uh, in front of the commission, so when June isn't here in person. We will have clear, um, concise, understandable communication that will take place. We've, uh, also incorporated, uh, the telephone system into Zoom meetings, so that we should have excellent communications there. We did have a, uh, acoustics engineer come in and take a look. At what we've done as far as sound buffering, uh, systems. And, uh, his recommendation is we need to work on the, uh, corners in the back of the room. And, uh, work on some of that space, um, testing shows that, uh, a lot of the, uh. Sound goes back and it comes back here towards us, uh, and reverberates. So this, uh, although this is a distinct and beautiful, um, gallery, um, it wasn't designed for, uh. Acoustics, so, uh, we will continue to work on that and make it the best, uh, it will be. Uh, the manager's office has been busy this quarter, uh, with more than nor- normal upper request and has managed all of these requests within lawful time parameters. Um, once again, I think, uh, I want to, uh, thank, um, Glenn and, um. Want to thank Nick for working on, uh, on those buildings and, uh, the amount of progress that we've made there. Uh, the manager's, uh, office has been working diligently with the sheriff's office on transportation issues and the county attorney. And county attorney has even, uh, prepared motions for, uh, for the court on transportation issues. And once again, um, under court order. If it's a lawful court order to pick up and, and move people. Uh, for court or for detention or on an active warrant, that's one thing, but we do believe that the courts have overstepped. A little, a little bit as far as, uh, requiring the sheriff, um, to even, uh, take. Inmates, they're not actually inmates, to take people to, uh, some social events, which, once again, um. That we can't have somebody in custody if there's no lawful charge, so there are some issues there, and I know June is, uh, on it. And working on it, I've also, uh, contacted, um. Other county managers, um, and, uh, we're looking at working with some individuals, we do think that. Originally, um, state law in New Mexico, and we're probably going back a century or so. But it was the county's responsibility to take care of the court. In a lot of those cases, it was probably a judge and a clerk and wasn't that big of an issue. Now we have monstrous, uh, court, um. Organizations, especially some of the bigger counties, and once again, the counties are still responsible for funding that. So we're going to be, uh, looking at kind of some long term. Um, now, solutions, uh, to dealing with some of those issues. Um, I think right now, year to date, um, we still have some billing out, but once again, I want to thank Gordon Slade, um, we have worked very diligently. On the, uh, on the jail and on our medical department at the jail and offset costs, I think currently. Uh, she'd build, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of eight hundred thousand, and I think currently we have seven hundred and fifty one thousand that has been paid in. Um, as Commissioner Weir demonstrated, um, that's like thirty percent of the jail budget. So we are working diligently to offset cost and, uh, benefit taxpayers, and I think that's, uh, that's just a good thing. Um, and, um, the sheriff's office and the jail are both looking at accreditation. And as everybody knows, that helps. Uh, bring, um, law enforcement and jail operations up to a standard, uh, that helps in a case of lawsuits and stuff like that. I think that, uh, once again, for both, uh, the sheriff's office and the jail to be so close to getting accredited. Is a, is a very positive thing, and I thank you for the hard work that you're doing. Um, on that note, um, I did do some, uh, checking, uh, financially. And just so you know, for year, um. Twenty twenty three, uh, Commissioner, uh, Weir, the jail actually total expense for medical and pharmacy. Um, was two hundred and thirty one thousand, one hundred and fifty four twenty two. Compared to, um, the last fiscal year with, uh, Roadrunner, which was five hundred and six thousand, five hundred and fifty five sixty. For a total savings of two hundred and seventy five thousand, four hundred and one dollars and eight cents. So once again, we see that, uh, it's pretty significant savings, and in the contract that we were presented, the contract went from five fifty. Um, to six, to six fifty, to seven, seven fifty. So once again, um, we, uh, have, uh. By bringing in revenues, um, to Colfax County and by offsetting, uh, significantly medical cost, we are making significant progress. On the issue of, um, dispatch, the sheriff and I have had, uh, pretty, uh, in-depth conversations on that. Um, I'm just going to tell you straight up, uh, coming from a county that managed a, uh, communication center. And all the challenges that go with a dispatch center. Um, we really got off on the chief on this deal. It was, uh, probably one of the better decisions, uh, Colfax County's ever made and not to have the amount of, um. Challenges that go along with, uh, managing and manning a communication center. I think when we looked at the overall calls, I think with the sheriff's office and with eight fire districts. Uh, we're right up around seventy percent of the call load for the resilient dispatch center, so, um, we're getting a great deal on that. Um. Once again, I just want to thank, uh, everybody, um, I want to thank the elected officials. Uh, for their reports, I want to thank, uh, department heads, and I want to thank my staff, I know we've been, uh, incredibly, uh, busy. And we have a lot of responsibility, we continue to move forward in a positive way, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kenny, Manager Gore, Commissioner Kern.
Um, yeah, just if you will, um, what is the status of the, uh, digitization of the records?
Status of the digit, digitizing of records? Um, Madam Clerk, would you have a little bit more information on that?
Yes, so we have, uh, sent out, like I said in my report, some of the, um. Aperture cards, and then they should be scheduling in probably about two weeks, uh, to see. What books we want to send out with them, so they're kind of doing it in stages, so it's going to. We are moving on the process, but it's taking a little while.
Thank you. And also, uh, what's the status of the Blosser Gap Bridge? Don't know if Glenn wants to address it or.
You speak up, uh, Vice Chair.
What is the, uh, status of the Blosser Gap Bridge?
Glenn, you want to come up and talk? On the bridge issue?
I think as Monty mentioned, the Mike Proline was up since three weeks ago. Um, I did give him all the flooding pictures, he was definitely going to take that in consideration. I'm not sure where he stands far as, it kind of wiped out all their.
Their stakes and everything.
Yeah, their stake and their markers and their ribbons in that area, so I'm not sure right now where he stands far as that goes. And he did, uh, mention. On the Bartlet Mesa subdivision, the, that he was going to get surveyors to survey them certain roads. To get started on that project.
Okay.
That's about all I know about.
Vice Chair Kern, I can reach out to Mike as well and get some updated, uh, information where we're at on that.
If you would please, I'd appreciate if you just sent an email to all the, all the commissioners on an update.
I can make that happen.
Thank you, Commissioner Kern. Commissioner, where?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, yeah, can I get, uh, an update to? The fencing project, uh, for Black Lake and, uh. Miami around solid waste.
What I've done, effectively, uh, worked with, um. Fred Martinez on that, and I know that they, uh, went up to, uh, Black Lake. Um, and, uh, took measurements and things like that. Uh, once again, um, what we're trying to do is, um, enclose the area so that it does, uh, help. With, uh, trash and stuff like that, uh, that would blow around. And right now, I think Fred is in the process of contacting contractors, uh, to get a price estimate on that project. Or on those projects. And I think the design, um, I had Tiana and Merrill go up there along with Fred. Um, I think the design that they settled on is kind of similar to the fence that we have with the wooden poles. And, uh, kind of the hog and wire type fence, and effort, and an effort to keep it consistent with what we already have. And, um, I think, uh, overall, when we had that discussion. We thought it would probably be less visual, uh, more rustic looking, less visual than like, say, a brand silver chain link fence.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Manager, I, I do think that the current. Uh, type of fencing that's being used is appropriate, it's aesthetically pleasing, I think it's effective. It's just the placement of it, and even if we don't. For whatever reasons, even if we aren't able to, uh, fence the entire area. At least fencing, you know, the, uh, the southern and northern ends, because usually, I know it sounds. Counterintuitive, but the winds come out of the south and they come out of the north there, just depending upon what season you're in. In the winters, they predominantly actually come out of kind of the south southwest, so the trash is going to be blowing across, then you would want. Uh. Fencing to the north, north, uh, north, kind of, uh, northeast, uh, so. Um, and if y'all need any input from the constituents that live in the area that do most of the complaining, I think that would be, uh. Uh, a good thing to do because they live with it. Uh, and they have for many years lived with the trash blowing out of that one, at least in Black Lake, Miami's a little bit different. We need to go talk to them, I'm not sure the details on, uh, Miami. And, you know, I, just to be clear, I, I, I'm not talking about. Gating it where we're restricting access to it. The fencing just needs to be to keep trash from blowing. That needs to be the primary objective.
I think, um, what we, uh, looked in there, uh, going along with that primary objective. Is to, uh, control it, uh, keep it, uh, aesthetically looking, like I said, rustic. Um, not like a, not like a, uh, a prison, uh, would be with a chain link prince. Um, some of the other considerations we're looking at is we did get new, uh, signage, and we're, uh, probably going to be placing cameras up there as well.
I think that, I think signage and the cameras will deter a lot of the abuse that goes on. And with the cooperation of the sheriff's office, we won't have to, uh, go after too many people before the word will get out. And, uh, I think that'll solve the issues quite a bit. Um, what is the status on our overall solid waste, because I was understanding that we weren't, um, we didn't have the, uh. The proper paperwork with the state to have the facilities, uh, set up.
Was that, uh, is that at Black Lake, is that what you're?
Well, I understood it, we didn't have it anywhere in the county.
The proper facilities.
Well, with the, with the state, um, environmental department, there's permits you have to have to have. Containers out, is my understanding.
Thanks for coming up, I think what, um, what actually, uh, had happened. Is, uh, and this was specifically at the Black Lake location. Is we had a roll off there and crows were getting into the top of the roll off. And, uh, the wind was picking it up, and as a result of that. The storage, uh, facility, um, right next door, uh, lodged several complaints. And, uh, also contacted, uh, the state to come out and inspect it. And from my understanding, um, dumpsters are fine and most, uh, and obviously the dumpsters have lids, uh, to contain the trash inside. When you start putting roll offs there, um, it, uh, brings about a situation where now you're looking at a transfer station. Uh, type setting and that the transfer station, um, will have to be totally fenced in. So, um, the best course of action in this case was to add additional dumpsters if needed. And, uh, um, unless it's a. A special occasion for roll off or something like that, not have a permanent roll off there. Is that pretty much, uh, uh, correct?
Uh, kind of, but let me add something to that, so what had happened was we had got some complaints to the state in regards to solid waste. Um, in the Black Lake area and the Miami area, and so Roy Cates from the state of New Mexico, um. Called and spoke with Tiana and myself, and in him calling to find out what was going on. Um, we discussed with him about the complaints, he found that we hadn't been registered with the state of New Mexico for several years. So we worked with his supervisor, John, and I apologize, I can't remember his last name. But he gave us an application to fill out and what we had to do was report our roster to him as far as. Because we're not actually a transfer station, we're a dumpster route, so we had to report our route to them, we have not heard back from them just yet. But they did confirm that they received our application with our route and all of the paperwork that they asked for, so they have everything they need from us. We have not received the permit back from them just yet.
And, and that's for the entire county, is that correct? And, and as far as the roll off requiring to be a transfer station, I mean, I'm not an expert on that, but I, I'm. I, I'm not convinced that that's the case, because we have roll offs all over the county and. They're not transfer stations and, and believe me, like the one. Outside of Simran by Yu Yu Bar, I mean, half the time you drive by, it's overflowing with stuff. So the, the, the problem is the issue wasn't unique to Black Lake. Um, you, maybe the fact that the state got contacted, uh, with a complaint may have been unique to Black Lake.
I, I would agree with that, and I think the fact that we have a storage unit, uh, with people trying to conduct business. Right next to it is probably the big issue, and that's why, uh, um, they ended up calling the state. To come review that specific area, a lot of the areas, uh, within the county where we have are more rural areas, even like U Park, things like that. Where, um, it's not an issue, but in that particular, uh, location, um. The, uh, uh, even the fire chief had commented that we needed to remove the roll off, um, the residents, uh, right next to the, um. The transfer station that on the, uh, storage unit, uh, that was their main source of contention.
And, and, you know, it had, we had the fence put up, that was, um, you know, promised to me over two years ago. Um. It would have been less of an issue, it wouldn't have eliminated the issue, but the real issue is we weren't picking up the trash frequently enough. Is that roll off was full, they're sitting there full for, I don't know how long, I would guess over a month. Because we brought the second roll off in from Arthur roll off and put it next to the full one, and the Arthur roll off one was full. Uh, when I went out there based on that complaint. And so, uh, the issue is that even today, even on the Fourth of July weekend. The crows are out there picking out of the trash cans and it was blowing all over the place, and, um. Uh, so the roll off wasn't the issue, to me, the issue was we weren't picking up frequently enough. Uh, which we all know was a big issue, uh, during that timeframe. And the other issue is not getting the fencing up to restrict the blow, uh, the. Uh, items being blown, because like I said, even when y'all put the thirteen cans in there. They were all full and people threw trash on top and the crows were picking on it, and, and if you went out there and look. I'm sure that, uh, people who clean it up can attest, it was all over, it was on the property next door even without the roll off. So the roll off itself isn't the issue. So the roll-off itself isn't the issue. And by the way, the roll-off is needed by the community. Especially this time of year and is predominantly for slash and large products that. And I think that as long as the cans are empty. People aren't going to throw trash bags in the roll-off because it's easier to put it in the cans and throw it up over your head into the roll-off. I think people are putting trash in a roll-off because the cans are all full and there wasn't anywhere else to do it. It's either there or on the ground. And that was a real issue. I think with that, and I do think that. We need to work on getting that fencing up and work on getting that roll-off back in Black Lake. I've had several calls from people wanting to know what to do with their slash. And, you know, items that would normally go in that roll-off. So I do think it's something we need to work on.
I, I would agree with you on that. Just so you know, I've only been in this position a little over a year. But we are working. We just came out of winter. We're getting into spring and summer. We've had issues with flooding, obviously. But we are doing exactly what you suggested as far as going up there, measuring it. And looking at a rustic type fence designed to, to address those issues. And once again, if you have constituents, please have them contact the manager's office and solid waste at any time. Because we are very responsive to any complaints.
So I think we kind of got a little bit off track, but to go back to your question about the transfer station. According to Roy Kate, he works with the state of New Mexico. And he did mention to us, the reason why Black Lake is. Being pointed out in this situation is because our other roll-offs do not have fences around them. They're not in a yard. According to the state's rules from Roy is if you're going to have dumpsters, roll-offs, it doesn't matter if it's dumpster or roll-off. Once it becomes a fenced area, it becomes a transfer station. So the more items we have there. And the fencing it in and trying to make it where everyone has to go in, we're going to have to get somebody to man that area. So he recommended that we get rid of the roll-off and don't have it enclosed.
So we could do fences, if you did a fence on two sides of the property, it'd take care of seventy percent of the issue.
And that's what they're working on is getting fencing around part of the property. But the whole point of him talking about the transfer station is if we do keep a roll-off there and we start fencing around everything. It's going to become a transfer station. We're going to have to register it as a transfer station. It's going to have to have man there every day, all day. Whenever it's open and people are only going to go, be able to go in at whatever time it's open. So if someone's there from eight AM to five PM. People can only throw trash from eight AM to five PM.
So I, I don't know. I mean, I'm not an expert on this, but the Village of Angel Fire has their fenced off. It's totally open and it has.
Yes, the Village of Angel Fire is a transfer station.
No, it's, they have a separate one for the community and it's not manned. They have a transfer station where that is manned, where you can go and you can drop off furniture and stuff like that. But they have. An area for the citizens to use a primary place and it's not manned. There's no, and it's fenced.
So I'm not aware of that area, but that would be a question for the state and I can give you Roy Kate's number if you want it.
And just real quick, we could have Manager Gore follow up with this and just, and just see what the Angel, Angel Fire is doing and then just get back to the commission.
Will do.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions, Commissioner?
Oh, and the nine one one update?
I think we have been working on a nine one one and consistently. Tiana is, should be back from vacation tomorrow and I can see we're out on that. And send an email out to the commission.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, anything more? Seeing none, we'll go to the next item on the agenda. Just adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? It's been moved to say to Madam Clerk.
Mr. Kern. Commissioner Ware.
Yes.